Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:31 PM. We will call this meeting to order. This meeting has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present today. We have just Commissioner Mike Mesmer on Zoom and the rest here present in Town Hall. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come before you seeking your comfort and guidance in the wake of the recent flooding. Our communities endured great loss, yet we stand together in faith and hope. We ask for your strength to rebuild, your wisdom to lead, and your grace to heal. Bless those who have suffered, protect those who serve, and guide us toward restoration. May we find unity and compassion and resilience in your love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's announcements. Mary, would you have some to announce?
I do, and it's a little different today than most days. That's why you see so many people here in the room. Can you do me a favor and invite fire department in? All right. So as most of you know, this is the first time that the commission meeting, the commission meets since the flooding that has really just taken over our community over the last two weeks or so. On March 26th, on Wednesday, there was significant rain here in the city of Harlingen. We received about eight inches or so of rain. And so like most times, whenever we do have a little bit of rain, our Public Works Department goes out and assesses and makes sure that, you know, just that our drainage system is working effectively and properly. And so that's what they do. So they went out that Thursday morning and surveyed the area. Everything looked well, went over to the Lozano Pond to see how much water had been retained there, and everything was just looking, looking great. Everyone watched the news and saw that potentially we had a 30% chance of rain, maybe two to three inches of rain to expect on that Thursday. But as we know, Mother Nature wanted to do her own thing. And on Thursday afternoon, I think I was at a ribbon cutting about 5 o'clock for Sat at the building. Josh was there, several other city staff was there. I had to take my, my shoes and throw them in the garbage when I got home because we were just stepping in puddles of water and it was raining really hard. Everybody was trying to have a good time, but trying to understand why it was raining so hard when it wasn't expected. So I went home that evening and about 7 o'clock or so, it started really pouring down. And it was a little concerning, but again, city staff went and checked to see and everything seemed to be going okay. Started getting messages from, from Gabe here saying things look good. We are getting a lot of rain, but it's, it's still manageable. By 8 o'clock, it was citywide and we were experiencing heavy, heavy amounts of rain and floods throughout the city. And by 9 PM, that's when emergency management kicked in and we knew that we were experiencing something unprecedented. We had significant rainfall in such a short period of time. And so I was just, you know, so incredibly impressed with Team Harlingen, and I wanted to be able to share that with you so that you know what was happening behind the scenes around 9, 9:30 PM. Chief Valderas, who is here in the room in the back, you're gonna just wave your hand. Chief Valderas is our fire chief and it, he is usually tasked with making sure in an emergency situation that him and I and city management and of course Chief Alviad, who is here somewhere as well in the back, that we, we come together and we work on how we're gonna tackle the emergency situation in front of us. And so that is exactly what happened. And there was a need to really call in some more reinforcements because we knew that this was something that we're not going to be able to handle on our own. So at that point, TIDAM was notified and we were able to obtain a strike team. And that's why you saw here in the city of Harlingen, so many different fire departments from all across the state. Some of those were Montgomery County, Harris County, Cypress Creek, Conroe, Galveston, Johnson, East Montgomery, New Waverly, and Walker County, all deployed here to the city of Harlingen because we got the brunt of the storm. We learned very quickly that we received, and anyone that was up watching the news saw that it was 16 inches, 18 inches, 20 inches, and then 22 inches of rain in such a short period of time right here in the city of Harlingen. We all prayed for water and prayed for rain because we're in a drought. Never, never did we expect to receive this response, but this is what we received. But nonetheless, Team Harlingen gathered and I am just incredibly, incredibly just in awe of the, the response that we had from our team, our Public Works Department. They worked overnight. Is Chris here? Chris Torres? There he is in the back. Christopher Torres is, for those of you that don't know him, he's our Public Works Director. On Thursday, he worked his whole shift, you know, just like he expected to be able to go home by 6 o'clock or so. They get there super early. These guys, they're, they're there 6, 7 in the morning, ready to start their day along, along with all of the Public Works Department. Just to give you an idea of what happened Thursday, Chris worked throughout the night as well as many others, Chief Valderas, Chief Alviad, Fire Department, Police Department, so many others. But Chris Torres also worked up until, I think I reached out to him at 7:30 in the morning because I had heard that he had not gone home. So at this point, he had worked 24 hours driving this city and assisting to make, making sure that everybody that needed him, that he was available to, to anyone and everyone, doing rescues and managing his team. At 7:30, he said, "Mayor, I think I got," and I'll never forget, it's in our text message. He said, "I think I have 20% battery left and I don't want to go home." And I guess city, city manager said, "You have to go home and go get some rest." And so that's what he did. But nonetheless, Ruth stepped in, who's our Assistant Director of Public Works, and she continued to lead the team. And Public Works worked, and these are the gentlemen that are here tonight. And I wanted them to be here because I wanted you to see their faces, know who they are, and know that they worked 24 hours a day until water had been, had receded throughout the city. And there were so many homes that were just flooded with water. There was devastation throughout our community. And what our team did was prioritize all the resources and the equipment that we had to go into areas like in District 2. Commissioner Lopez has an area of our community that unfortunately got the brunt of the storm, I would say. And they ensured that public safety, public health is paramount, and they focused all of their energies at that point to get the water out of the homes and make sure that people were rescued and were taken to a shelter. Which leads me to my next point in that we also have Javier Segura, who is here, General Manager of the Convention Center. And on Thursday, he reached out to me and said, "I am opening my doors because I want to make sure that every single person that is rescued by all of the men and women that are here in this room tonight have a place to stay." He did that unsolicited. When Gabe and I were talking about opening a shelter, it just so happened, God works in mysterious ways, that I got a message from him, a text message, almost at the immediate time, saying, "I'm here and I'm gonna open my doors." He did that, and that gave an opportunity for anyone being rescued from the people that are here. And just so that you know, Border Patrol is here too, because we have an amazing partnership with Border Patrol. And I talked to Chief Chavez and she, she said, "Absolutely, Harlingen is here. Harlingen Border Patrol is here to help." And they came out and helped rescues. It was Harlingen Border Patrol, Texas DPS, Fire, Police, and Public Works, all working together. And I am still getting the emails, the text messages, thanking the city of Harlingen and wanting to know the men, the names of the men that helped pull people out of vehicles, out of their homes, and taking them to shelter. I can go on and on, and I, I don't want to, but it's just so much important information. I just want you to know that from the time on Thursday till Saturday morning at 6 AM, when there were no more calls for service, the men and women that are in this room and many countless others that couldn't be here right now, did, responded to rescues to, in an astonishing number of 1,041 rescues. I almost feel like I'm gonna cry here, but I'm not. Just think about that number and, and, and just knowing how many potential deaths were prevented because they were rescued by each and every one of you that are here today. And I am eternally grateful to each and every one of you. Then came, how do we now transition and help the people that were displaced from their homes? After all of the wonderful work that was done through Team Harlingen and those that came to help us, we needed to make sure that people were fed, that people had a place to stay, and that they just had an, an ability to just breathe and know that they had someone caring for them. And that's where the shelter came into place, and it is still open today. And they have been providing meals to the tune of about 2,000 meals every single day at the Convention Center, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And that is because Sister Norma, who is here today, came to the Convention Center and knew that the city of Harlingen was suffering, that we needed help. And she, without being asked, just offered assistance in, to be able to feed the people of Harlingen and connected us with World Central Kitchen, who is a organization that helps in disasters all around the world, not just here locally. And through Sister Norma, we have been able to feed 2,000 families here in the city of Harlingen, breakfast, lunch, and dinner since she walked into the Convention Center up until today, where at 6 o'clock, they will be feeding bistec tacos, rice, and beans. So thank you, Sister, Sister Norma, for that. We really appreciate everything that you've done for us. In addition to that, our friends from the Red Cross, and I know Kayla is here, and she has been instrumental, you and your team, everything that you have done. I know that you've been boots on the ground, not just here in the city of Harlingen, but in the surrounding communities also, providing meals, providing supplies, taking them to the people, and taking over the operations of the shelter, which was important because y'all are the experts. Javier graciously opened his doors and you provided an opportunity to get the right people in there to service our, our community and the surrounding communities. In addition, Salvation Army as well has provided food, food drives throughout our community in multiple locations. So I can go on and on, but I won't. I just want to tell you from the bottom of my heart how much I appreciate each and every one of you. I have seen a strong, resilient Harlingen, and it's because of everyone working together. I know Steck is here, Bill is here, your team, working around the clock, trying to get people to where they needed to be. I know you've lost some equipment along the way, and so did every other department within the city, but it was all because we were trying to save lives. And at the end of the day, that's what it is. It's human life is the most important. It is paramount in the city of Harlingen, and everyone stepped up, every department. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. But we do have our communications team that wants to just provide a little, a little something for you. So, team?
As of this morning, I've declared a state of disaster for the city of Harlingen. We've notified the Governor's Office and we're working closely with state emergency management officials to bring in additional resources to our community.
It wasn't something that was anticipated because we weren't really given any, any notice regarding heavy rains. It wasn't projected to really reach to the levels that we are seeing today or that we've seen over the last 24 hours. So immediately, you know, human life is always going to be paramount. And so we started to mobilize last night to find out how we can lean our, our community partners to provide shelter to our community.
Here you'll see the board. We have all our resources and our deployment action. The community here has been great. I know that there's some businesses that have donated meals, and so we really appreciate that. All I can address the community is to be patient. I know that you're probably waiting and we're utilizing, like I said, all the resources that we have.
We have been in constant communication and gathering information from the community. And so being able to lean on the community to, for them to be our eyes and ears in locations where we are not at, so that way we can get help to them, has been instrumental. Please, I plead with you, if you do not need to be out on the roads, stay home, shelter in place. Let's make the roads safe for our first responders to get to those that need us the most. Stay safe and be part of the solution with us so that way we can get through this together.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, staff, and community members. As the mayor said, this is a united service and a team of Harlingen departments and entities from all over the state of Texas that came together to really show that every life is important, everybody's important in Harlingen during this time. And they came together to really help over 1,000 people, and that number is so staggering. And there's an actual number, you know, we know how many people we helped. And all the people in here were part of the solution. So if I could have a representative or if everybody would like to come up here from the Public Works Department, the Public Buildings Department, South Texas Emergency Care Department, the Catholic Church, Sister Norma, if you all would like to come, we have a small token of appreciation for you all. The Border Patrol of the Rio Grande Valley, the Red Cross, the Texas Department of Public Safety, and the Salvation Army, of course, the Harlingen Convention Center as well, Chief Alviad, Chief Valderas. And I know that the police dispatch, you know, there were so many, you know, people that were working that had to work shifts of 24 hours because nobody could come in. And they stayed working because they knew how important their job was to make sure all the people were safe in the, in the community. And they knew that their job was imperative and they did it. And so we were just so thankful and we have so much gratitude in our hearts on behalf of the City Commission, city administration, and staff as well. You know, these are our coworkers, these are our sanitation guys, everybody is like, "These are my friends, these are our buddies," and they're out there, you know. Of course, they also have families and they put the community first. And so thank you all for putting the community first. And if you would like to step in front of here in the dais, we would love to give you all a little token of appreciation.
Okay, don't be shy. Everybody, come on up. And if the commission will join, we'd like to take a photo with them and the communications has a gift for them.
A small, little token of appreciation for you all. And we have more coming. We're very proud of this whole group up here, and we know that there's countless families out there that helped and, you know, individuals and businesses as well. So a big round of applause for all of the people standing up here and all of the community that came together.
No, it is, right. Absolutely.
It's perfect. I don't know about perfect.
Thank you.
Item 3B, City Manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, you have anything to announce?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to announce that Danny Diaz has been promoted to Parks Director. I saw Danny, where is he?
Back.
Danny, wave your hand.
Mayor, Commissioners, Danny Diaz, Parks Division Director. Thank you for the opportunity. Super excited and ready to get to work.
Thank you, Danny.
Secondly, Mayor, I would just like to add to your comments and just say how proud I am of everybody that's in this room and how they reacted to this crisis. Nobody ever complained when they were asked to stay longer, to do more, to provide equipment, to stretch it beyond its use. Nobody complained. Everybody just said yes and moved on. And the task was just to rescue as many people as possible, to feed as many people as possible in it. And I would put this team up against anybody in the nation. So thank you, anyone, thank you, everyone, for what you did, and I am so proud of you guys.
Item 3C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
Obviously, I echo everything that's already been said by the mayor and the city manager, but I want to get into something that Cassandra mentioned briefly at the close of her comments and thank the folks that did what good citizens do. They helped out their neighbor. And it may have been something as simple as what was happening in my alley, which was trying to find everybody's trash cans, then it floated away. Or help somebody get their gait back on the track or something like that. I mean, those folks won't get a bag, but everything that they did is just as important. And the folks that helped out people that they don't know, that's, that's the big stuff as well. So, you know, God bless all of you. We don't need this. We've had enough 100-year, 500-year, 10,000-year rains. We don't need another one. But thank you. God bless all of you.
I concur with everything you said. Thank you.
I agree. Let's not forget the different churches that went out, out of their way to provide us with meals and services. The American Red Cross helped us out tremendously. Salvation Army, Javier Segura, the PD, Fire Department, Public Works, everybody. Special shout out to Constable Eddie Solis. I needed some help. He helped me, he came through. I still owe a couple of, a company their pallet janks. I should be able to return them tomorrow. I'm sorry, I've been a little busy, but we will get that straight. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mesmer would like to say something. Public Works and the city staff went way out of the way. And I'm saddened and sorry for those who have suffered physical damage and those who suffered anxiety and psychological, psychological damage. May God have mercy upon their souls. And for those who criticize Harlingen for doing nothing during the flood, you're wrong. And for any community just in Texas or the United States or in the world that gets 21 inches of rain in about 18 hours, every community will flood. We excelled in our response to the flood.
All I wanted to say was you guys were amazing. I want to say thank you, and each and every single one of you embodies what Harlingen Strong is all about. So thank you.
Item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. Item 4A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we have Kaiser. He's a male shepherd mix. He's been at the shelter since March. He came in by himself and he is there looking for his forever home, waiting very patiently. So anybody who's interested in Kaiser is welcome to go by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski. Or if they have questions about Kaiser or any of our other animals, they're welcome to call 216-5250. And then just to let everybody know as well, we will be out at Petco this Saturday with adoptions. And then we will be having another vaccine clinic on April 26th, and we'll be posting that information online soon.
Awesome. Is Kaiser for foster or adoption?
Right now, because Kaiser hasn't been there that long, he is up for foster. We want to make sure that he gets all of his vaccines before we actually put him up and have him adopted.
Wonderful.
So we want to make sure that he's fully vaccinated.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any potential foster parents?
Item 4B, presentation by interim Chief Alfredo Alviad on lifesaving award to Harlingen Police.
Police Officers Rogelio Montoya Jr., Ethan A. Gonzalez, and Randy Reina for saving a human life on March 1st, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone who is present here today. At approximately 10:58 a.m. on March 1st, 2025, Harlingen Police Officers Randy Reina, Ethan Gonzalez, and Rogelio Montoya Jr. responded to a report of a male choking on food. The individual, who was unconscious at the time, was located in a vehicle on the frontage road. Upon their arrival, the officers began performing CPR, which successfully restored the male's ability to breathe on his own. Emergency medical technicians later arrived and transported him to the hospital where he was admitted alive. It is an honor to gather here today to recognize and celebrate acts of extraordinary courage, quick thinking, and selflessness. Today, we are here to present the Life Saving Award, which acknowledges the exceptional efforts of those who, through their unwavering dedication and compassion, have gone above and beyond to protect and serve, preserve lives. The recipients of this award have demonstrated what it truly means to serve and protect our community. Their actions embody the essence of what it means to be a hero, not for the recognition, but for the life they saved and the difference they made in a time of crisis. Let us take a moment to reflect on their incredible commitment and thank them for outstanding contributions. We are incredibly proud of their service and the impact they had on the lives of others. Please join me in honoring Randy, Officers Randy Reina, Ethan Gonzalez, and Rogelio Montoya Jr. of the Harlingen Police Department for their extraordinary lifesaving act. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Can we take a small step back?
Next, we have Item 4C, Proclamation, Women in EMS of the South Texas Emergency Care Foundation Doing Business As Harlingen Emergency Medical Service.
Good evening, everyone. So, our proclamation today will be to be recognizing the women of South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. And I will read the proclamation before I invite Bill to come up and say a few words. So, whereas South Texas Emergency Care Foundation Doing Business As Harlingen's Emergency Medical Service has been proudly providing emergency medical response, treatment, and transportation for citizens of the city of Harlingen and surrounding communities since July 1st of 1979. And whereas over the course of its service, Harlingen Emergency Medical Center Service has responded to more than 736,000 emergency alarms, offering critical and compassionate care to those in need. And whereas the month of March of 2025 is recognized as National Women's Month, a time set aside to honor and celebrate the invaluable contributions and achievements of women across all fields of endeavor. And whereas, the Harlingen Emergency Medical Service has consistently supported and encouraged the inclusion of women in all aspects of emergency response, including roles such as paramedics, flight paramedics, critical care paramedics, community health paramedics, EMTs, nurses, 911 telecommunicators, as well as administrative and support personnel. And now therefore I, Norma Sepúlveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby recognize and commend the women of Harlingen Emergency Medical Service during National Women's Month for their unwavering commitment to serving the sick and injured, alleviating human suffering, saving lives, and delivering the highest standard of emergency care to our community. Bill, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you. Commissioners, Mayor, Counselor, and, or Melinda, when I began my career in EMS in 1970, it was, as well as when I was in the fire service, all of our departments were men. We did not have women in our public safety agencies. I hired one of the first ones in about 19, oh, 1979, 1980. And it was incredible, the work they do. People think they're not able to lift heavy weights, they're not able to carry people downstairs, they're not able to crawl into cars that are turned upside down and rescue people. That couldn't be any further from the truth. And I know we're a few days late on this, but you have been busy and we understand that. But we wanted to recognize some of the ladies of the Harlingen EMS. Several are not available to attend because their own duty. I think we had four that were headed this way that got sent somewhere else. And then, of course, several that are off duty. I appreciate the proclamation, but I wanted to introduce to you the women in EMS. We're very, very proud of our team, they're moms, they're leaders in our community. And we're just very proud that they come to work every day and they really are well-accepted by the women patients and the children when we respond to emergency calls. Ladies? Don't be bashful.
Thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and present the proclamation and if the ladies can meet us here in front of the dais for a picture with the commission as we present the proclamation.
Here, shift, like, three steps this way. Right there, right there. Okay, all right, ready? Now, we'll go here and in three, two, one. One more, three, two, one. Perfect.
If I may. Back in line, Rachel. We're very grateful to the commission and we're very grateful to our community.
All right, moving on.
Okay, Mayor, Items D and E have been rescheduled for the meeting of the 16th mayor, so we'll move on to Item 5, Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor, we had a total of four citizens that signed up. First up is, we have Ms. Alice Becerra.
Ms. Becerra?
Hi, everyone. This is my first time speaking at a Commissioners' meeting, so thank you for your time today, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name's Alice, I'm a nurse practitioner. I live on White Oak Drive here in Harlingen, along with my husband and our three small boys. I'm here to talk to you today about the flooding and drainage concerns our neighbors and myself, my family, all have. I understand and realize, well, before I get into it, I also want to personally thank everybody in the room. Our community members, our public servants have been wonderful. I'm not here to disparage anyone, I'm here to just bring awareness to our street and the problems that we're suffering from. So, thank you to everyone. I printed out a handout here for you all, just to go over the history of the neighborhood's flooding problems. And we have been in the home since 2016. We experienced our first flooding problem in 2018. I have some photos here for you. You can see that the water had risen up to halfway of our mailboxes, the entire street was flooded over, there were vehicles stranded in the street. At that time, the water did not enter the home, but it did flood the garage about three to four inches. So, that was the extent of that. The following years, 2019, we had similar flooding issues. 2021, I also have documented some photos here in the handout. You can see the stranded vehicle in the middle of the street, as well as the empty lot next to our neighbor's house. That home is directly across from our home on White Oak. A couple more photos, a few more abandoned vehicles, and just the extent of that flooding is very severe. None of these rain events were associated with hurricanes, I just wanted to clarify. Then, if you flip over to current, 2025, last week, I have some photos here. The first photo is us driving into the neighborhood around 6:00 p.m. on that Thursday. All of the water from Morris Road was rushing onto White Oak. I'm just rapid water rushing, we had never witnessed that before in the nine years that we had lived there. So, immediately, we had concerns that the street was going to flood. We didn't know or realize it would flood to the extent that it did. We had about nine, 10 inches in the home. My three children slept on our king bed, surrounded in water. I get very emotional because to us, we love that home, we love our neighbors, we don't want to move, we just want this addressed. So, I'm going to continue on over. A couple more photos I had measured here, this was immediately after the waters had receded, which took about a day. You can see 13 inches out on the exterior of the home, inside the home, 11, including the garage. Some photos of vehicles stranded on the street, you can see fire department out there, they were walking in waist-high water. God bless them because, you know, we couldn't leave the home, they instructed us, stay in the home, there's nowhere else for you guys to go. Streets are not safe. And so, we did, we spent the night in a foot of water, we all huddled up on our king-sized bed, including my one-year-old baby boy. We did not sleep that night, I was so scared that the baby would roll off the bed and drown in the water, I was terrified. So, a couple more photos here for you guys to review. Our kitchen with our kids' playset from the playroom floating in the home. You can see our oven flooded, the entire kitchen flooded. You see my two children here, huddled up together, asleep on the bed. We did have, like I said, just, this is, I understand it's unprecedented for the city of Harlingen, but it's also unprecedented for us as a family. We love Harlingen, we love the community. Some photos here, I'm just going to continue to get through this quickly. This was after the flooding had receded, you can see our master bath, water overflowed, backflowed from the bath, from both of our showers. So, sewer water came up into all of our bathrooms. You can see the crib here in the master. I included some water meter photos that Surf Pro came and did. The following day, they came out on Saturday to do the assessment and initiated the demo for the home. Couple more photos here of what the home is actually like right now. They cut out two feet of drywall, they're doing all of the drying while we live in the hotel. I'm just going to reach the very end here. We love the community, you can see here, these are our neighbors. We've hosted annual Halloween socials for the last three years. I had my second son's baby shower with all the neighbors invited to the home. And this was us last week, all gathering together at multiple homes. One home posted hot dogs for the neighborhood, unsolicited. They did it out of the kindness of their own heart while they demoed their own home. And so, I just wanted to speak today to, first of all, address the issues, to advocate for everyone on our street and the streets of Harlingen. I realize we're not the only community that has flooded, multiple areas of Harlingen have suffered. And then lastly, I wanted to thank you all. Thank you for the commitment to our community, thank you for your service to every single family that lives here. And just from the bottom of my heart, I thank you and I just ask for your help, help us fix these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Becerra.
Up next, we have Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Good afternoon, Commission, Mayor, Citizens. Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan-Tucket Drive. So, yes, very tragic, Mother Nature does what she does, she reminds us who's actually in charge, it's certainly not us. So, digging right into it, because I got three minutes and I hopefully will beat the clock, but there's a lot of extensive things that I'd like to speak about very quickly. First off, it's good that, I guess, y'all got together with the EDC and are going to do $3,000, but yeah, my building alone suffered way more damage, along with a lot of other buildings. It's good to get all this stuff reported and to try to make an assessment of the damages and stuff, but, you know, for the things I do, I've reached out to several different agencies that I'm sure you guys have reached out to as well. And everybody's waiting for FEMA, but FEMA's in not a good state right now and stuff. There's other states that have gone through fire disasters, tornado disasters, still waiting for funding. And yeah, the funding's not coming anytime soon from what I've been told. And I have plenty of resources at multiple levels, municipality, state level, and beyond. So, knowing all that, I got together with some former city managers from other cities and some current ones that I talked to. And there is apparently some type of option, I don't know too much about how this stuff operates, but I can certainly look into it, how we have all these reserve funds that can be allocated to be utilized to help the citizens and businesses of Harlingen. And then at some point, FEMA can reimburse the city for the allocation of those funds. Again, these are just discussions that I've had with other individuals, both former city managers and current cities that I know people in and stuff. Again, we've been around in the political realm for a very long time, my family's always been in that because of the type of businesses my father had. So, I think that if we can do better, we should do better for the right reasons for the citizens of Harlingen. I also heard, I was out there in my truck that I called Bertha. And we were out there on 507, we were out there, you know, in all these areas that were flooded, my daughter was completely flooded. We jumped into military mode and did a rescue and stuff, took her the stuff she needed. I did see some vehicles out there, it's kind of hard to find these other vehicles that are out there, you know, throwing water. They should be cruising it like I was instead of going fast, but Mother Nature caught up to some of those vehicles because they splashed too much water and they became victim of their own nonsense. It's going to happen, karma will happen like that. So, very quickly, if I can just mention the retention ponds. So, the retention ponds are a good thing, but if we, and we never know when we're going to get that much water, there's got to be a way to be set up so they can drain into something. Because from what I understand, some of those ponds, well, all of them overflowed from what I was told. And they actually flooded the areas they were supposed to protect. So, I think we just need to revitalize and look at our plans again and continue making positive progress for everybody's benefit in the long run. And that's all I have. Thank you. Next time, I'll beat the buzzer.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Next, we have Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, 909 East Parkway. I just wanted to start off and acknowledge that our first responders, our federal, state, and local first responders, they did a fantastic job. They reacted and they took care of the community. However, what I would like to say is that- However, what I would like to say is that when you fail to plan, plan to fail. And that's exactly what this city commission has done. We've been trying to say, do not spend money on parks when that money can be spent on drainage. I'm looking at the engineering department presentation overview about drainage. We had a 10-foot by 10-foot box culvert that's 3.2 miles that would have excavated the water out of downtown. And it says, "Plan regularly reduce flood, capable to convey a 100-year storm event. Submitted application to FEMA brick grant early 2024. Grant not awarded." Well, if we didn't spend $8 million out of the 4B board, we could have used that money to done drainage. The fact of the matter is that Texas local code says that you can use 4B money, okay? You know it's true, on drainage. And also, TERS money. We have TERS money sitting in the bank, and it's not being used. But yet, you look at these reports, and it says, "We don't have the money to do drainage, but we can go spend money at Longsey Hill on that park, that supposedly that destination park that's going to bring people from out of town," when that whole area around Fair Park floods every time it rains heavy. Those people over there get rain. Why are we spending park money in neighborhoods that flood? The other thing is taxes. Well, you know what? Raymond brought up a good point, too. You know, you guys did something for the businesses, but we, you know, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars into a city disaster relief fund that's set aside. Why aren't we using that to help residents with vouchers for hotels or vouchers to get, you know, supplies or food or something? There's money there. Why isn't that being used? We did, you guys in the 2024-2025 budget, y'all just upped the Loews &amp; Fishes Illegal Alien Grant from $25,000 to $50,000. I don't think they need that money as much anymore. Why don't we claw that back? Mayor, I'm just, you know, I hate to be a stickler about it, but, you know, I've got some of your travel information. And you've traveled 27 times in the last 32 months. You spent $40,000 on travel. You've been to DC three times. You've been all over the country. You've been spending $700, $800 a night in DC. But yet, you can't come up with some money to help people who are flood victims, come up with some kind of hotel voucher so they can not stay in a, you know, a house that's been flooded and, you know, while it's being renovated? You know, 27 times. You've been to Allen, Texas, once.
Your time is up, Mr. Lefwitch.
San Antonio, six. Garland, once. Kansas City, once. Arlington, Virginia, once. Austin, eight times. South Padre Island, three times. Dallas, once. Atlanta, Georgia, once. DC, three times. Corpus, once. You spent $38,000, and you're spending $800 a night in DC. One of the things that you did, you went to a DC conference for-
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
I'm the only one that can't say anything over the buzzer.
Next, we have Mr. Israel Aguilar. Mr. Aguilar?
Dr. Aguilar, do you want to speak now?
Oscar, your staff doesn't have to stay if they want to.
Because they're enjoying it.
Know that we love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Sepulveda and Commissioners Court. Israel Aguilar, 28136 Cook Lane, Harlingen, Texas. And I'm here today to speak about my concern and looking over the consent agenda that you will approve tonight, a few development projects like subdivisions based on recommendations from the P&amp;Z Committee. I saw on some of the notes that no one came forward and that so many notices were issued to the public about coming forward with any other concerns or for the projects. On three different occasions in 2022, I came before the P&amp;Z Board to share similar research data and my own concern with Legend South subdivision. Despite clear evidence and one of the engineers on the P&amp;Z Committee at the time, who agreed with my data that Legend South subdivision would implicate the surrounding areas by flooding them out, the new subdivision did pass and eventually came before you for final approval. And I also did come before this commission to protest the same subdivision. Well, two weeks ago, the same landscape of Legend South subdivision did flood out the existing neighbors. And this area does lie within the area that you would call the ETJ, right? And I'm not here to necessarily point the finger, but rather, I'm here as a member of the RGV Coalition of Drainage Advocates to help our community move forward and do better. There is an ongoing petition to help our region recover from this particular effort. And I really do encourage all the citizens, not only from Harlingen but around the Rio Grande Valley, to definitely sign this so that we can get some more support, not only at the state but also the federal level. But in the meantime, please hold off on passing any new subdivisions in this particular time when we still have a lot to do together to find a solution that would prevent any more flooding in our region. And again, it goes without saying, I do appreciate all of what you did during this time. It's very important that we stick together, and I appreciate all you all have done. Thank you, and have a good night. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar.
That concludes our citizen communication, Mayor. We'll move on to item six. Approval of Minutes, item 6A, Special Meeting of December 26, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business, were included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Is there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda?
I would like a aye and j, please.
Okay. Any other gentleman? Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item a, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Purchase of One-Man Lift to Maintain the Transfer Station.
Okay. Questions?
Yes. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
The only thing I ask is, I'd like to see the copies of the other two quotes for this. We need to have three. So from here on in, I'll be asking for those quotes.
Absolutely, sir.
All I have is one, please. And if you don't mind, that's also the same request for item a.
J?
Or j, thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions for Chris?
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a motion for aye and j? Yes?
Yes. Motion, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eight, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members of the city or city manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Report.
I don't have any.
None? Item 8B, Presentation by South Texas Emergency Care Stack on the Quarterly Report.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to go, quickly go over some of the flood numbers so we all can see what we went through on the EMS side. So I just put together this presentation for your review. So as a photo of Rojondo there, which was very difficult to get in and out, and we had many calls in the rural areas as well. So those were challenging. Rojondo, LaFeria, and Santa Rosa were areas that were giving us a lot of issues. And fortunately, we had some assistance with the county. Cameron County EOC, Emergency Management, provided a lot of help in getting vehicles and patients to where we needed to be so we can rendezvous with some of these patients. One of the big issues that we came across was just getting to the hospital. So when we get the 911 call, particularly when the frontage roads were full, our turnaround, sometimes we had to send trucks all the way to Highway 100 to turn around and come back around because, you know, the roads were just full. So there were just long transports, but, you know, the fact that just trying to get around, we had supervisors just running around trying to find the best alternate routes we could just to get to hospitals. So challenging enough, and you had a critical patient onboard, it was a nightmare per se. So I'll go over the numbers with you real quick. So this is for the period of 27, 28, and 29. Our flood times, I guess, our total calls for that period were 323 calls. We had 235 emergencies. We also had non-emergencies. So understand, we still had patients in the hospital that needed to get out. So hospitals needs to clear out those beds to see the patients that we're bringing in. So we're actively moving patients out of hospitals to nursing homes and areas that weren't impacted by some of the flooding. And so for that period of time, we continued with the emergency calls as well as the non-emergency calls. We did have many calls for just wellness checks. We probably had 30 people calling just asking, "Can you just come check my blood pressure?" kind of thing. And it was like, well, we'll get there, but we have emergencies that we have to go to. So it was a little stressful. Majority of the calls that we received for the wellness checks were just people, when we got there, there was really, "Well, I just really need you to get me out of here" kind of thing. So it was more of a water rescue type of thing. So in that period, of course, we ran into very high waters, and our units are on the taller side. Some of them are a little taller than others. But regardless, the amount of water that we received did damage some of our units. Typically, we do have 17 ambulances that we have in the fleet, 12 are MICU, five are BLS. We do have six supervisor response vehicles. Our supervisor response vehicles have everything onboard, so we can do everything from cardiac arrest, administering medications, ultrasound. We have ventilators and all that on that. So really, we can call it an ambulance. We just can't transport in that. And of course, we also have a fleet repair vehicle that we send out mobile so they can help us out whenever we need repairs in the road. So let me tell you about the damages. Ambulance, one ambulance was total loss, so we encountered a crew that actually had to abandon the ambulance because the waters got too high. And we had substantial water damage to the components of the ambulance, so we did have one loss. Two ambulances will require engine replacement, so basically, there was enough water that came in, the engines, that they'll need new engines. These engines, of course, aren't cheap either, so they cost some money. And everything we have nowadays is backordered, so we're waiting for parts and all that to come in. So just kind of, it makes the situation worse when you have parts backordered or motors backordered. We had one supervisor that sustained some water damage, but it was repairable, and we got that ambulance out. And we also had two ambulances that also sustained some water damage, but there were also the Ford dealership, Seames, was able to get those up and running. So it really took us out of a crisis. We still have, you know, the three ambulances that we have to contend with that are out of service, but the other two were able to get back in service. One of them, we're still waiting on some parts, but they're able to, they feel that they could get that up and running here in the next day or so. And then, of course, we have one ambulance that's being remounted right now. It's been in the remount for a couple of months already, so that, hopefully, that should be out in a month or so. And having that back in will be a great asset to us. I do want to thank the Emergency Mental Task Force. As you know, we are part of EMTF statewide. So when we go to Harvey and all these other hurricanes, you know, we go and help and kind of do the same things that we, the crews come in and do help us out here. So Cameron County did request an ambulance strike team. As you saw the fire trucks, now you're also seeing some ambulances coming in into our area. We did position those throughout the county and Willacy County as well. Of course, Harlingen was hit a little harder, so we did have ambulances deployed to LaFeria, Rojondo, and the San Benito area as well as Harlingen. We did have one ambus that initially came in, and if you were at the convention center, you would see that big ambulance bus that was out there. We did utilize the strike teams really to help cover that shelter, that way we can keep our trucks on the emergency side, and then we keep an ambulance. And currently have one ambulance at the convention center, just making sure nobody gets hurt. And if anybody's sick or gets sick, we have a team that's there that can take care of them. But along with the deployment of the ambus, we also had five ambulances. MIST is a medical incidents strike team leader. They basically come in and coordinate with the EOCs and what have you. And then an ambulance strike team leader, he's the guy in charge of all the ambulances or the gal that's in charge of all the ambulances. And of course, they also assigned some high-water vehicles for our EMTF team as well, as for us, through the EMTF and TDAM. And then we assisted particularly in the county side, how, getting folks out of the homes and what have you. So we currently have five ambulances still in Cameron County. We're probably looking at deploying or demobilizing that team probably this week sometime. And again, we continue to support the shelters here in the city. And really, that's kind of, I just wanted to keep it quick because I know you guys got a long agenda there, so I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions or anything? Yes, sir?
How long does this take for you all to replace an ambulance?
Well, you know, if you order an ambulance, if you were to give me cash right now and I were to order an ambulance, it would probably take us six to eight months. There are some folks that are waiting about a year sometimes. Just depends on the return on that. But, yeah, there's usually a long time. And being that we may be in a situation where rebounding may be a little faster, so instead of ordering a new one, we'll just order chassis and remount it. That might be a little faster, and that's our plans right now, so. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you, and, you know, you're always so professional and responsive. I know we keep in contact, and I know it's hard work that y'all do, you and your team, but being able to manage through this flood and still doing the work that you do. So I just want to tell you how much we all appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
We'll move on to item nine, Public Hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, we do have two citizens that signed up for public hearings on items 9A and 9B.
Okay. So we'll get through these. Item 9A is public hearing for a special use permit to allow a civic lodge in a multifamily district located at 2006 Wayland Road, bearing a legal description of 2.542 acres and 0.62 acres out of the south, five acre of Lot 14, Block 147, San Benito Land and Water Company Subdivision. And this is, applicant is Christine Blouch and Renee Capistran, care of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2410. This time, we will open the public hearing on this item, and we do have a Ms. Melanie Dimas here. You can approach.
I talked at the zoning also. I own the property. I wrote a little summary.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Pretty much the same thing. I own two parts of it. We've lived there since the '70s. It was, it's always been the VFW, but it was a small building with not much activity. The building's actually going to be pretty large now, and I, they don't have their graphic up, but I got the plans, and it looks like the building is going to be right up against the property line, and the cantina part is, and she couldn't answer how close it was to the property line. So zoning had mentioned about putting up a 10-foot fence to, for the privacy and safety. I'm also wondering whether that could not be brick considering the noise that's going to be coming out of that area. Plus, if you have the plans, you don't have the plans in front of you, right, because they haven't, but there's an assembly room also that has garage doors, which I'm sure to help facilitate bringing things in and out, or also have some kind of activity. So what we're trying to do is just have a little bit of assurance of, I guess, privacy. And if that could be part of the zoning, I believe that's what they had said. But- But I think it's all in the little thing that I wrote about that, so. It's pretty much, I thought they were going to present first, so, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. We will go over the, the action item after all of the public hearings.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Having no one else to speak for or against item nine A, we will close the public hearing at this time. Move on to item nine B, public hearing for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 1105 South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of 3.4740 acres out of Block 33 in the Stewart Plate, Stewart Place subdivision. This time, we'll open this public hearing, and we have an April Puente signed up to speak. Ms. Puente?
Mayor, the item she signed up to speak for was pulled off the agenda?
Nine B.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will pass on nine B. Item nine C, public, is there any others that are?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. Item nine C, public hearing for an SUP to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in a general retail district should be located at 1402 North Loop 499, bearing a legal description of tract A, Citrus Flats subdivision located along the east side of Loop 499, being 277 feet north of Grimes Road. This time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine C. Having no one here to speak for or against the item, we'll close the item. Item nine D, public hearing amending the previously approved planned development district site plan to allow for 28-foot wide streets with 30 feet of right-of-way for 90 town home lots and one commercial lot development on a property bearing a legal description of 12.537 acres of land out of portion of lots 1, 2, 7, and all of Lot 8, Block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the northwest corner of Hayne Drive and FM 509. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine D. Having no one here to speak for or against the item, we will close the public hearing. Item nine E, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to a planned development district to allow internal roads to have 50 feet ROW add for 64 patio home style, single-family residential lots be less than the required 6,000 square feet for a property bearing a legal description of 9.815 acres out of Lot 17, Cunningham subdivision located on the south side of Primeta Road and southbound fronted road, Expressway 77. This time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine E. Having no one here to speak for or against the item, we will close the public hearing. Item nine F, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of 3.22 acres of land out of Block 164, San Benito Land and Company subdivision located along the south side of FM 675, approximately 2.89, 0.84 feet southeast FM 509. This time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine F. Having no one here to speak for or against the item, we will close the public hearing. Moving on, Melinda.
Item 10, action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a civic lodge in a multifamily district located at 2006 Wayland Road, bearing a legal description of 2.5420 acres and 0.62 acres out of the south, five acres of Lot 14, Block 147, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision. Applicant Christine Blouch and Renee Capistran, planning and development.
Mark, if you could read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit SUP to the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2410, to allow a civic lodge in a residential multifamily M2 district located at 2006 Wayland Road, bearing a legal description of 2.5420 acres and 0.62 acres out of south, south five acres of Lot 14, Block 147, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So the request is for a civic lodge, the VFW at this property located here. Being it, it is in a multifamily zoning, it does require a special use permit. The Veterans of Foreign War Post 2410 are requesting the special use permit. Here's a street view of their current facility. Based on the site plan that they did provide and the floor plan, they're proposing a 10,700 square foot facility. Here is a site plan. Here's where they're proposing the new VFW be built, so they will be demolishing the current building and rebuilding a completely new building with, so all of the surrounding is parking. Based on what they provided, they will be required 107 parking spaces, and they are providing 108 parking spaces. Their hours of operation are going to be from Sunday to Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Surrounding properties, as you can see, are zoned residential multifamily to the north, southeast, and west, and there are some general retail to the northwest. We've got the Early Collegiate High School to the northwest and vacant farmland. There is a residence right here adjacent to the property. Here is the floor plan that was submitted. And what the structure's proposed to look like. Now, keep in mind, this is all conceptual at the moment. There are no definitive plans that they have submitted. This is just for the special use permit process. Here are some renderings that were provided by Noble Builders. Here is an aerial view of the property. Here is the current facility. Here is a single-family residence. You've got the Riada Apartments over here, vacant land, Windsor atrium, and the Harlingen Early College High School. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit request, subject to the following conditions. Those conditions being obtaining and maintaining all state and city permits, providing and maintaining the required parking in accordance with city regulations. They must provide a minimum 30-day retention on their video surveillance. They have to comply with all other requirements set forth before them by planning, building, fire, and police, and they must adhere to their hours of operation, which are Sunday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Are there any questions for Sol?
Yeah, Ms. Moore, is a few questions. So they will first demolish their exist, existing structure?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And they're going to build 10,700 square feet?
That is what they are proposing. Now, what I did feel to mention is that the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this with the condition that they do have a 10-foot fence as a buffer between that single-family residence and their new facility.
Okay. And then will their building or their park, any of their parking spaces be in a right-of-way?
No, they will not. Everything will be out of the right-of-way.
Okay. And so on this recommendation, the 10-foot fence is not there. How can you make this?
So currently, they do have a fence of six feet due to the opposition that we received at the meeting, as you did here during the public hearing portion. Planning and zoning felt that is a way to mitigate the concerns. A 10-foot buffer would help. Now, you can, as commission, add more conditions if you feel it's necessary.
Do you feel that there are any more conditions necessary?
At this point in time, no. So there, aside from the 10-foot added fence, they also have a 10-foot setback that they have to adhere to. So that's another added buffer between the single-family residence and the actual building itself. Now, given the presentation from Ms. Blouch at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, part of that facility will be used for veteran services from 8:00 to 5:00, so they will have an office setting.
Okay. Currently, do they have live music? And in the future, are they planning on live music?
They currently do have live music. I think mainly it's Fridays and Saturdays, and I think they plan to stick to that. Now, if the concern is if they're going to go past midnight, they cannot go past midnight. If they do ever plan to go past midnight, if we ever get reports that they go past midnight, they will have to amend their SUP.
Thank you.
You answered my question with the setback. I don't know. Is there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 1105 South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of 3.4740 acres out of Block 33, Stewart Place subdivision, applicant Cipriano Carvanes.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit SUP issued to Cipriano Carvanes to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 1105 South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of 3.4740 acres out of Block 33, Stewart Place subdivision, 139, 297, 298, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If this looks somewhat familiar to you, this got approved last year. However, that applicant decided to forego this location. We do have a new applicant applying for the special use permit at 1105 South Tam Lane for a proposed bar lounge. Per the request, I mean, per the code of ordinances, special use permit request is needed for the particular location. Here is the proposed floor plan. And here's a street view from business 83 of the facility. Here is the map that did go out to property owners. Now, we did receive written opposition. Opposition is 8.26%. Here is the letter that was given. Same individuals that opposed last time, and here's their property. Now, you do have a few properties that are general retail. Most of the surrounding properties are residential, single-family. Here is the calculations for the opposition. Again, 8.26%. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit request, subject to the following. They must obtain and maintain all proper state and city permits. They must provide video, video surveillance with a minimum 30-day retention. They must comply with all the requirements administered by all of the departments that will review this. Hours of operation are going to be every day, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and they are required to have a licensed security officer on site during their peak hours, being Thursday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
What was the percentage of people that opposed this?
Eight percent.
Eight point 26%.
Was that on the original or this time?
This time.
It was the same amount last time you said.
Correct. It's the same property that opposed. So it's one large tract of land, which gives us 8.26%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Item 10C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in a general retail district to be located at 1402 North Loop 499, bearing a legal description of tract A, Citrus Flats subdivision located along the east side of Loop 499, being 277 feet north of Grimes Road. Applicant Sydney Harness, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit SUP to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in a general retail GR district located at 1402 North Loop 499, bearing a legal description of tract A, Citrus Flats subdivision, located along the east side of Loop 499, being 277 feet north of Grimes Road. Applicant Sydney Harness.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This request for a special use permit is for an unmanned battery storage facility to be located at 1402 North Loop 499. Here's the subject property. It's approximately 6.27 acres of the Citrus Flats subdivision, tract A. So it's proposed for a 100-megawatt two-hour battery storage facility. The applicant has provided a rendering, which is in your packet, of what they are proposing. This facility is currently under construction. It did have a special use permit, however, by ordinance, when a property is sold, either that company that is purchasing it or individual must have the special use permit under their name. Here is the street view from the loop. We've got vehicles mobilizing. Here's a site plan that was provided by the applicant. Another rendering. So the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Commission has approved various projects throughout the city, the first one being on Tucker. There is a second one on, coming in on Lincoln. There's another one on East Harrison, Corleone Construction, and this facility, and there's also a fifth one on East Memphis that is in review right now. So previously, this one was approved for Black Mountain Energy in May of 2023, but again, they did sell the property, so the new company does have to obtain their own special use permit. Here is a photo of the only facility that has been completed on Tucker Road. As you can see, they do have a high fence. You can barely see the actual batteries. This project will be required something similar, since they are on the loop, along with landscaping to offset the machinery and all of that. So here is an aerial view of the subject property. Here is the AUP station. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit request, subject to the company complying with all of the ordinances and regulations set forth by planning, fire, building, engineering. They need to install and maintain an eight-foot solid wall along Loop 499 boundary with landscaping and an irrigation system between the wall and the pavement, and the fire chief must approve this project prior to the final issuance of the certificate of occupancy and the building permit being issued.
Okay, so whereas this is just property changing from one owner to another, everything else remains the same, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Before the motion, I do have a question. Is the person here or the?
Yes, ma'am. They are here.
Can I, where are they? There you go.
Hi. I, just some, some questions regarding, I think since the last time this was approved, I've done a little bit of research, and some of the concerns that I had were that these battery storages, facilities take away from the grid power. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, so, and I, I had spoke briefly with Beverly at the EDC. She had mentioned this concern from, I, I don't understand the full concerns you all are facing regarding from a distribution level, but this will be a transmission level asset. So we will, we work closely with the utility. We work closely with ERCOT, which is kind of oversees the process. We will have an agreement in place. And then during operations, we, we do charge the battery from the grid at low-demand times, so when there's not necessarily as much need for electricity, and then we actually contribute to the grid with grid stabilization through, at high, like, high-demand times, we will discharge the battery, so it'll actually contribute to the community. And we don't have any form of contract with anyone, so it's, it goes directly into the, the local grid.
So if needed, that would service the community? Because it was my understanding that it would be sold to wherever throughout the state.
So some, it depends on companies' business models. So for East Point, the owner of Citrus Flats Energy Center LLC, we are what we call a merchant, but, excuse me, battery operator. And so what that means is that, yeah, we're contributing directly to the grid. We do not contract through, like, a lot of times you have power purchase agreements or build-on-transfer or other kinds of mechanisms, but we, we are not doing that in this instance.
So it goes back to the community?
So it goes back, yes, yes, yes. And it's, it's a little complicated with, like, ERCOT and how they, how they, like, distribute, but yes, it is immediately back into the local grid.
Okay. Thank you. So, thank you for that. Was there any other questions? We have a motion.
In a second.
By Mike and a second from Morales. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item 10D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading, amending the previously approved planned development district site, plan to allow for 28-foot wide streets with 30 feet of right-of-way for 90 town home lots and one commercial lot development on a property bearing a legal description of 12.537 acres of land out of portion of lots 1, 2, 7, and all of Lot 8, Block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the northwest corner of Hayne Drive and Farm Road 509, applicant Melvin and Hunt, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, amending the planned development PD site plan to allow for 28-foot wide streets with 30 feet right-of-way for 90 town home lots and one commercial lot development on a property bearing a legal description of 12.537 acres out of land out of a portion of lots 1, 2, 7, and all of Lot 8, Block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the northwest of land out of a portion of lots 1, 2, 7, and all of Lot 8, Block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the northwest corner of Hayne Drive and FM 509, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is an amendment to a previously approved planned development. When this planned development first came in back in 2021, it was part of the Paso Real Coves to the north. The developer decided to go a different route for these, which is more of a townhome concept. It is going to be a private gated subdivision, 90 lots, 28 feet paved roads, 30 feet of right-of-way. Here is the original site plan back in '21 that was submitted, and here is the new one. So because the roads are a little bit narrower, the subdivision is private, the entire roads will be fire-lane. So there will be no parking allowed on the streets in this subdivision. So the developer is proposing townhomes, and then this one right here will be a commercial lot for future commercial development. The new proposed site plan will allow for 90 townhome lots, one commercial lot, and a lot designated for a common area, which is the green space that you see here. Here is a similar subdivision in McAllen that is very successful. This would be one of the first kind for Harlingen, something a little more modern, a little new. Surrounding properties are zone planned development district for single-family residential use to the north, office district to, and general retail to the south, and planned development, planned development district to the east, west. East of FM 509 is outside city limits. Here is a view of the property from Hayne Drive and a view on East FM 509. Here is an aerial view. This over here is already filled with homes. We're actually on the third phase of Paso Real Coves, and this will be an extension. The future land use plan shows this area as low-density residential. The proposed amendment of the planned development is in line with the future land use plan. It's still considered low-density residential. So here is an example of a residence in Harlingen. And staff is recommending approval of this planned development request, subject to them complying with all of the applicable building codes and regulations. No on-street parking will be permitted on either side of the interior streets, and they must comply with all drainage requirements and all applicable requirements from the engineering department. So given the recent flooding we've just had, this will be something that we, we will be focusing on during the subdivision phase.
Yes, Mesmares questions once again. So speaking of flooding, I don't see any space for water retention. And number two, if these are going to be small roads with no parking, and you said gated, does that mean this property company will own those roads, or will those be public Harlingen roads?
No, they will be privately owned and maintained. This particular subdivision will have an HOA maintaining everything within that subdivision.
And drainage? Not that it ever rains in Harlingen.
So currently, this property is under the subdivision review. That is something that we are looking at. The subdivision, once approved, will come before you for approval, and we will get with engineering prior to make sure that it complies with all of our requirements.
I think it looks good. I like the idea of providing more opportunities, but I'm concerned, just like everyone else, I'm sure, here on the commission, of the drainage, making sure that it meets our expectations when it comes to drainage. And I don't see anything else either, but.
So this ties into the drainage for these three phases. It's, it's all a master drainage plan. However, we can get with engineering, just to make sure that they touch on everything they need to, and if extra drainage is needed, that can definitely be added.
It tied right into a drainage ditch on the north, on the west side, right? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
So it's going to be like every other?
Like the rest of those others that went up, the three different Paso Real?
And are they going to be, eventually, they're going to have to, if they're going to tie in to Commissioner Mesmares' point into that drainage ditch, they're going to have to expand it, because that's a part of our ordinance, right?
Correct.
Which would then improve drainage of that area. And they have a whole risaka system in this area as well.
They do. So the first three phases of Paso Real actually has a lot of common areas and green spaces.
And you recommend it, so?
I do. It's something different for the city.
They also have a huge retaining, retention pond on Paso Real Coves.
Yes, they do.
Off of Easter trails.
That's coming back to us anyways, once they start going into design.
So this is the first phase for the planned development. The subdivision still has to come before you, because there's park fees that will have to get approved.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to planned development district to allow internal roads to have 50 feet right-of-way and for 64 patio home-style, single-family residential lots be less than the required 6,000 square feet for a property bearing a legal description of 9.815 acres out of Lot 17 Cunningham subdivision, located on the south side of Primera Road and southbound frontage road of Expressway 77, applicant Melton and Hunt, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to rezon from residential, single-family R1 district to planned development PD district to allow internal roads to have a 50-feet right-of-way and for 64 patio home-style, single-family residential lots be less than the required 6,000 square feet for a property bearing a legal description of 9.815 acres out of Lot 17 Cunningham subdivision, located on the south side of Primera Road and southbound frontage road of Expressway 77, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is another planned development request by Melton and Hunt for a property south of Primera Road. Here is a property highlighted. They are proposing to have 50 feet of right-of-way and for 64 patio-style homes. The residential lots would be less than the required 6,000 square feet. Here is the site plan they provided. Property is currently vacant. It has 447.90 feet of frontage along Primera Road and a depth of 954.40 feet. Primera Road is a four-lane, approximately 47-foot-wide paved street with curb and gutter. According to the site plan, 64 lots will be for one patio home-style, single-family residence on each lot. Setbacks would be 20 feet in the front, five feet on the sides, and 10 feet in the rear. Here are the setbacks highlighted as per the plat. Here's a view of the subject property from Primera Road. The properties to the south is zone light industry, and the properties to the east are not designated. Surrounding land uses consist of single-family residential use to the north, mobile home residential use to the east, and vacant land to the south and west. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. Here is the mobile home park and vacant land down to the south.
That vacant land is going to be what's turned into the Roosevelt Industrial Park.
Yes.
That mobile home RV park took a shellacking, a shellacking in the flooding. That area is going to flood. If you remember, Oscar, when we drove, that area, the two, two slides back, that's where we parked. There was cars skewed everywhere.
So this area was hit pretty badly by the flood. And given everything that's happened, this is still in the subdivision review phase, but we will be focusing heavily on making sure that new developments don't go down the road that other ones have. Granted, things are inevitable, but as new materials are available for us to read, personally speaking, I try to make it my point to make sure that we're focusing on things like this.
The issue with this area is that there's nowhere for that water to go. So I had the owner of the RV park calling me and saying, pump water or I'll pump it. But there was nowhere to pump it to, right? So.
Hi. The other thing, there was a nut, I was looking on here, and it says that two lots are going to be designated for detention, right? And that they're going to be privately owned and maintained. And so the concern, I think, is, you know, Oscar and I were looking at some subdivisions that said the same thing many, many years ago, and they're not maintaining them. So what are we doing as a city to ensure that when they get past this process and they're saying, we're going to maintain them, we're going to create an HOA, and then once the HOA is created, it'll revert to them. They're going to take care of it. It's going to be wonderful, and we won't have any issues because we're going to be on top of it. What are we doing to ensure that that is the case? Because I guess there's a little balance, right? Because it's private, but at the same time, we don't want developers just writing that down and not actually doing it.
So in the past, their previous administration in the department has given the option of it can either be privately owned or maintained, or the city will own and maintain it. We want to try to get away from the city will own and maintain it. However, we do see the plat notes. It'll be owned by the developer. It'll be maintained by the HOA. There are some subdivisions that have an HOA, and that plat note is there, but their HOA has not formed yet. So in those instances, as far as planning is concerned, we can only get involved to a certain degree. Code can send letters to the property owners, to the developers, make sure you're maintaining your property, make sure you're mowing your detention, keeping up with it. Other than that, on our end, there isn't very much we can do. We were dealing with something last week. One of the ponds south of Palm Valley was empty. We kept getting complaints about it, getting complaints. All we can do, as far as code goes, is send notices to these property owners, make sure you're maintaining your properties. We cannot go into private property.
But when they flood, who were the ones making sure that they're getting the water out of their, out of their subdivisions? I'm wondering, and just, just an idea, I know that for sidewalks, right, we have an escrow account to make sure that they're going to.
It's a good idea. That's a good, I know where you're going. It's a good idea.
Make sure that they actually build the sidewalk. And I, and sometimes with a sidewalk, it seems like, yes, it's great and wonderful, and we want to make sure that we're promoting health and wellness, and we have a vision for that. I know we recently kind of reduced the amount of time to hold, hold it, but if things don't, and we want to be developer-friendly, but at the same time, I think drainage is much more important, and we're seeing that more and more, that these, these issues are, are actually the direct result of flooding in at least some areas that we have assessed since the flood. So.
We could, we'd have to, right now, we can't really do anything. We'd have to change the ordinance to give us authority to either, one, have the HOA created before they actually start selling any of the lots, or two, require an escrow that would be sufficient for us to hire an attorney to create the HOA for them if they don't do it. But I, I need to get with Mark to figure out how we legally do that.
Gabe, would you prefer that we table this until you and Mark and whoever work out the fine points?
Honestly, I don't even know if they have one, if it's going to make a difference. I don't know. I'm, I'm not comfortable. I don't know how the rest of the commission feel. I, I love the idea, the patio homes. I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the smaller square, square feet for the properties. I know that the legislature right now is looking at trying to take that right-of-way from cities, period, and to make it where, where we can, where there can be more homes, because more homes are needed. The real issue to, for me, is that this is just coming at, at a time where that, that area just really got hit. So I don't, I don't know.
So instead of two lots, what about three lots or four lots for retention ponds?
What we can do is, if you would like to table the item?
Yes, sir. We love your idea. It's just, we're also looking out for the people that could potentially live in those homes, and we want to make sure that we're being responsible, so that way, you know, they're not sitting in a situation where they buy these homes and then they're flooded.
Completely understand. Marlon Garza with Melton and Hunt, project manager. I've actually been in charge of this project from day one with the owners. They are local residents. Brownsville and Harlingen, the families kind of split up. So they know of the, the issues in the area. They're not from out of town or anything like that. They've done some successful residential subdivisions in Brownsville that they're just finishing up. This will be one of their next ones.
Where in Brownsville?
I'm not so specific of the, the area. They are Prisma subdivision in Brownsville. So they are finishing up their second phase. The first one should already be recorded, in case you'd like to go on and, and research on that through the county clerk. And so on this one, we actually have four lots. The front four lots are for retention. The two east and west would connect to, yes, four. So the, all the lots that are frontage off of Primera are meant for, for detention. And then we have it currently designed draining to a text-out inlet, if I'm not mistaken, off of Primera Road.
The issue is the inlet doesn't work.
I mean, I, I understand your, your concern. I mean, we're, if it is, as we understand it, to be a text-out inlet, we're only allowed to bleed into it, so it would detain within the system as per, you know, City of Harlingen regulations, after going through the engineering department review, before it would bleed into, into that inlet. We're more than willing to work with the, you know, with your development team, with your review team. We've worked very closely with the engineering department. This isn't, you know, the first or the last project that we'll be doing in the city. So of course, we want to do right by, by all.
What do you think, Daniel? Because these people will be calling you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not on board at this point. Because I will be getting those calls.
And you're right. I, I drove around with Danny in that area, and it was bad.
And that's because when we went, it was already like three days into it. So we'd already been draining.
I think, I think the first thing you got to, or, they got to communicate with text-out on how that inlet, there's, how can they get it working, functioning properly, right? Until they, they address it there, we're going to keep having those issues.
My understanding also, previously to having the detention ponds in the front, the industrial part that was mentioned was supposed to also have a pretty sizable detention area on the south side. That's something that we could go back and look into.
It's on the west side.
Or on the, on, okay.
So it's not a, you will be essentially the bottom part, which is vacant land? That's going to be a budding to the back of the Roosevelt Warehousing, whatever you want to call it. Because the detention ponds, looking at it, if everyone's looking at this, is going to be to the left, south of Wayne Place or whatnot, right? I'm just.
But that's going to be designed just to drain?
For that area?
Yeah, the industrial park, not for the adjoining property.
Correct. I mean, we would, we would look at being able to accommodate further drainage in the area, if that is an option. I mean, we're still in our, in our preliminary stages as far as for the, the design of the subdivision. We have not submitted the full set of construction plans yet for review. Of course, because we need to go through this process before we finalize any of our design, in case anything changes.
So this is just a rezoning, right?
Yes, sir. This is just a planned development request. They are currently going through the subdivision phase, but they have not gotten approval on that end yet.
And that comes to the commission for final approval?
Yes, sir.
And so right now, this is not a planned development, right?
Currently a zone, single-family residential.
So there's no drainage plan that's tied to this yet?
No.
I'm not approving the rezon, but to get me to the build, this is going to take a lot, because it's going to be Chris in the back that's going to be taking all these calls. When I get the call, Chris is getting the call. That's the next person that's going to get it, and Oscar's going to get it. So.
You can approve it with additional conditions if you feel you need to.
What conditions do you think? Hearing what we're thinking.
I mean, what we can do as staff on the subdivision end is meet with Luis and his team and figure out what is the most effective way to handle this subdivision as far as drainage is concerned, given what just happened. This area does flood very, very bad. So I do understand the concerns, and as staff, we will look at that. I don't want to speak for Luis. He's not here. I am not an engineer. But we can definitely speak with him and figure out if what they have is okay, if they're going to need additional detention or some other form to better drain this area.
So what about this issue that we're having that developers are saying that if they're going to be maintained? and then that there's going to be an HOA? Is that, is that what's supposed to happen here in HOA forms and then they will maintain it?
Correct. I know Melton and Hunt is pretty good about their HOAs. Now, that's not always the case with other people. We have dealt with one particular subdivision that their HOA isn't formed yet. So they come to the city wanting us to do things. As long as they meet our ordinance, we don't go into deed restrictions, materials you can build with, things like that.
Just in order for them to get to the drainage part of it, we have to approve the rezoning part first, otherwise it's not.
I, I mean, I, I am, I think, not just Daniel, I think the whole commission feels the same, the same way that, you know, we, this, this, this is just the first part of moving forward. But in order to really consider building in that area and that community, I think everyone on this commission is going to have to feel satisfied that the drainage isn't going to be an issue. And that is, from where I'm sitting, it's going to be very difficult to be able to get that taken care of. Just so that you're on notice, I just don't want you to feel that if the commission moves forward with this, that, you know, it's, it's kind of a done deal. We, you know, I think everybody here on the commission has, has had, has had an opportunity to drive through that area and see the damage that that RV park, mobile home park sustained. And we just don't want to see that happening to these potential owners of these homes as well.
No, we completely understand. And that Friday morning, or ever since Thursday, our bosses, Ruben James, Mario, myself, and all of our survey team, since they couldn't really do any surveying, they were all boots on the ground, looking at all of our past, present, and future projects, everywhere from Brownsville to Roma. So we have, if I'm not mistaken, 11 survey crew teams. And all 11 with multiple men were out in the field, drone footage, water surface elevation. So we, we do our due diligence by the time we finalize the design, that we can feel confident in that it, it won't be a problem. I mean, like mentioned by, you know, the same council before, though, last, you know, last week's or the previous week's rains, it's, you know, it's not really something you can design for on every single development or every project. Your engineering department will, will find it the same way. It exceeded 100-year, 500-year flood, if I'm not mistaken. So it's very difficult to, to design for a storm of that magnitude. You know, we, we try our best to, of course. We don't want damage to any of our, you know, future potential lot buyers. But I, when it's a storm of that magnitude, there's only so much that engineering-wise and infrastructure-wise can do.
I think the issue is that intersection for the past 30 years has always flooded, whenever you have rain. So whether it's a 500-year storm or like a Sunday rain, that area is going to flood. And so we just want to make sure that your potential, your future clients are protected. I would also ask that Oscar and Chris, you guys work on this as well with them, because, and work with the City Primera, to see how we can work with Text Dot to alleviate the drainage in that area as well. Because it affects Primera's, the City Primera as well. So I'll make a motion to approve subject to planning. Sol, you add any stipulations you think need to be added to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10F, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation of 3.22 acres of land out of Block 164 San Benito Land and Water Company, subdivision located along the south side of Farm Road 675, approximately 2,890.84 feet, southeast of Farm Road 509, applicant Emiliano Cruz.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 3.22 acre tract of land out of Block 164, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located along the north side of FM 106, approximately 1,295 feet east of FM 509, binding the land to all of the acts ordinances, resolution, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective deed.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Item 10G, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading amending the adoption of the 2024 International Codes and the 2023 National Electrical Codes, applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
An ordinance repealing ordinance 202021 of the City of Harlingen and adopting the 2024 edition of the International Codes by the International Code Council, Inc., to include the International Building Code, International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, International Fire Code, International Wildland Urban Interface Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Private Sewage Disposal Code, International Existing Building Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, International Property Maintenance Code, ICC Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities, International Green Construction Code, and adopting the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, 101 Life Safety Code, including the annex chapters, and adopting the 2023 edition of the National Electric Code, NFPA 70, including the annex chapters, and repealing all city ordinances in conflict herewith, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So on this, Gabe, I remember when we had meeting with staff and developers, we told them that we were going to have another meeting and we were going to go over this, kind of flush everything out and give them an opportunity to speak, and we haven't done that.
We actually did.
We did, we had a meeting. We had a meeting in March with the developers. We're scheduling another meeting. This is coming back to you because the wrong code set was repealed last year. So now we're repealing the correct code set. But we do have another meeting scheduled. Effectively, these codes go into effect May 6th of this year, but we can always push that back. We do have a new building official onboard. He has already gotten his certified building official license, very knowledgeable individual. He has had one meeting, he is researching and preparing himself to have another meeting with these individuals. That way, he can answer any questions they may have, concerns, and everybody can be prepared to go.
I would prefer that we do that. If there's no rush, if we can push it.
We can move the date back if you want.
Yeah.
We can do it now.
Okay.
So.
You want to do it at the end of the, start the next fiscal year, October?
We can do that.
Would you feel comfortable, Sol, because you're there in the department, what do you think everyone will be?
So I think our building officials are one spear hitting this, but our inspectors also need to familiarize themselves with the new codes, as well as our deputy. That way, they can, when they're out in the field doing these inspections, they know what they're looking for. ICC is backlogged with their books. We did get one set in, we still have some supplemental materials coming in. So moving it to October would be perfect. And we did repeal the correct code set this time.
I just want us to be ready. The last thing we need is, is for our staff not to be ready to enforce this. And then also the concerns, I think we just, you know, fully transparent with everyone that this is going to impact. And if, if there's no rush, then I think we do it more responsibly. And I'm glad that you're on, on, on board. All right.
All righty, yes, we can move it back.
Okay.
So motion to approve, subject to postponing the implementation to October.
October 1st.
October 1st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Item 10H, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in general authorization, the waiver of city building permit fees for residences and businesses affected by the recent storm flooding, applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in general authorizing the waiver of city building permit fees for residences and businesses affected by the recent storm flooding, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Can we pull up the ordinance on the screen?
We can, we'd have to have, Josh, can you get, sorry, put it up on the screen?
If you guys have it in front of you, can you guys read paragraphs four, five, and six?
Is there something in particular, Commissioner?
Yeah, this doesn't track, the ordinance doesn't seem to track with its intent. All right, and I don't know, maybe we just copied from a different ordinance?
No, well.
Because if you read like, if you read the title, it says, okay, waiving permit fees, right? But then I don't see where it talks about waiving permit fees in a flood or anything of that nature. Right, and so it's not tracking, one. Two, the big picture question, under what authority did the city, I know we waived permitting fees, we put it on social media that we did it, under what authority did we do such?
I asked you to do that.
Okay, does the city manager have the authority to do that? Or does it have to come back to be ratified?
No, we're doing this to that date.
Right, so yeah, so what we're doing is we're, you'd be enacting this, this ordinance, waiving them effective the date of the, of the action.
Of the disaster.
Of the flood, because of the, because of the exigent circumstances caused by the flood.
So with the emergency disaster declaration, I, I talked with Mark and he said that based on the situation that we could do that at the time and then bring it, bring it to the commission to retroactively ensure that it's done on that date. But on what authority, I don't know that there needs to be an authority that it can be waived. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, right. Because my thought is this, is that.
Not my authority, but legal authority.
Yeah, if we're going to already amend the, the ordinance, why don't we just give the mayor the emergency power to do it? And we don't even have to.
An emergency.
Yeah, right, because this whole thing of having to come back and ratifying becomes like a whole, like procedural issue. I think if, if the commission was okay with it, like if in the instance in which a mayor signs an order, like a declaration, disaster declaration, then the mayor can make this issue. Or can, has this a specific power? Because it's not like the first time this has ever happened. And unfortunately, the way it's progressing, it's going to happen again.
Commissioner, we can certainly add that. We can certainly add that to the ordinance.
Correct, but yes, to me, right now, reading the, the ordinance, it doesn't track with what we wanted to say. Usually the where it says, you know, because of on March 26th, there, there was a flooding event. At least that's the way I dropped my ordinances and resolutions. And so, Mark, if you can just touch it up, we're going to prove it with that intent.
Okay.
You just, you know, amend it so it tracks with what we want and then gives the mayor emergency powers in the instance in which he or she signs a declaration of disaster or whatever the term is called.
Yeah, emergency disaster declaration. Okay.
Excuse me, do you have a length of time for this?
That's a good point, right? Like typically, I think under the Texas local, or the Texas government code, I think, what is it, 455 or whatever it is? When it talks about disaster declarations, they're good for 14 days. And then at which point, then it has to go before the city commission and/or the county commissioner court to be extended. So the mayor can do it, or the mayor or the county judge can do it on their own. And then within 14 days, it has to be, if it's going to be extended, the commissioners' court or city commission has to then approve to extend it. So if you want, Frank, that's a good question, right? That the mayor would have the authority to do it for the first 14 days and then the city commission would have to approve any extension of that.
I like that.
Yeah?
I think whatever, whatever works.
Real quiet on this one.
Huh? Real quiet? No.
I might have put you the statute on this one.
I think, that's why I was saying, I don't know that there is a legal authority that you have to draw on to do it. I think that the city, the commission can waive the fees should they want to. I don't know that, right, because that, I mean, unless it was in our charter to say otherwise.
Well, because typically, the, the charter says that it's the commission's purview of like financial decisions, right? And because that's such a big financial decision, you would think it would have to come before the commission to be done normally, right? So I'm just trying to streamline the process for the future, so that we don't have to be jumping back and forth.
So I guess what I'm saying is, without the ordinance, we could still do it in, in a disaster, because that's exactly what we did, is we got sought counsel from legal. Legal said, yes, you can do it because we are in a state of emergency. And because of that, you have the authority to do it. So then we did it, so.
Correct, correct. There's no, there's no legal issue doing it. But I think it would be helpful to have a procedure for, for the future.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. So I, but I know if we're trying to, I just want to confirm that that, that was, that was the, those are the steps that we took. But if it is in fact, like Daniel says, that there is a legal authority that says that we have to follow, now, we've already done this, but as a city, we, there is a section where we have the authority to waive the fees. That's what you're asking, right?
Correct.
So is there? I don't, I don't know.
The city always has the power to waive the fees. But what you'd be doing here is clarifying the procedure and giving the mayor the power to unilaterally do it for 14 days after the declaration of a state of emergency. And then if it was more than 14 days, you go to the commission. You'd simply be documenting a procedure by which you could do it.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, what, the question I'm asking is that if there is a legal avenue to do that, like is there, is there legal, is there anything controlling whether we can or we cannot?
Just the inherent power of the city commission under the charter.
Which is what I understand, but that's not what I'm getting from Daniel.
Well, you'd have to have the ordinance that creates the fee and what it is, or you have one.
I think he's talking about the state of Texas.
I don't think there's, I think.
Is that what you're saying, that there is some legal, that cities can or cannot waive the fees?
Yeah, or an ordinance, right? Whether, do, what authority did we do that?
Okay, got it. Locally.
Locally, or statewide, right?
Okay, so yeah, locally, we didn't have it, but we had the authority because of the situation. But not what, what you're, I guess what I thought you were saying or trying to ask or alluding to, that there is something that we needed to do, that we, what, what, under what, I don't know, whether what statute or what.
Correct, and so that's what they're saying, is that there was, the, in the situation, it was done with the thought process that we're going to come back to the city commission and ratify. Which means that it could not have been done but for authority by the commission. But the thought process was, at that time, commission will in fact eventually approve this, right? On a prayer.
No, because we have an ordinance that says you will charge for rehab.
Right, we have, right. So in order to waive that, we had to.
Right.
I mean, I guess the commission could have said no.
Correct, and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right.
Is in the future, we just say, mayor can do it within a disaster declaration for 14 days, then it can be approved.
Please don't say no, because I have to write a big check if you do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But Mark, you understand what I'm going with? And then we'll move forward from there.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the 14-day language that we discussed with the extension as rightfully brought forth by Commissioner Morales.
And so I think Commissioner Morales was talking about the wait, how long we were going to waive the fees?
That's what we, is it 14 days?
No.
Well, no, 14 days for you or the mayor at this point to, to make this, to waive the fees.
I thought you meant how long we were waiving the fees, like 90 days or?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
So it's initially 14 days, and then the commission, you know, once we get together for a meeting, we'll then decide we're going to waive it for 90 days.
So what did you decide?
We haven't decided that. That commission will decide at that point.
So this commission is deciding now for this period of time?
Oh, you want to do it for now? That's a good point.
That was what you were asking, right?
14 days is not going to be enough.
No, well then, what do you recommend?
Well, most people have to contact their insurance company and that's going to take, I don't know, I've never gone through this before, so I don't know how long it'll take.
So to give you some insight, people are still assessing their properties. They haven't even come in to ask for a permit, to ask for anything. We've gotten a few here and there, maybe handful of 10, most. But most people are still assessing their damages.
So would you recommend 16, 90?
16.
16, we can always extend it if we need more time.
Yeah.
Let's just go with that.
60.
How about a little bit more time? Because how long does it take for you to get to your insurance and, don't you?
What'd you recommend?
What is your recommendation?
Given where we're at, I would think 90 days would be fair.
Okay.
And if by that point in time, it's three months. If people have not taken advantage of it, either their home is a total loss or they're just not going to do it.
Okay, yeah, and just, and I think, I think it's a good number because remember, if you have a mortgage, the check comes to the mortgagee and to you, so both parties have to sign it. And so most people are going to come in to get a permit on this app cash.
Correct. I think 90 is good.
That works.
So you have a motion?
Yes. All right, let's figure out how we're going to do this. All right, motion, motion to approve the ordinance subject to the changes discussed, namely to give the mayor his. emergency powers in the instance in which he or she signs a declaration disaster order for fourteen days and which will subsequently be extended by the city commission.
And, and also providing for a ninety-day period to pay.
On additional ninety days to pay for the March 26th, 2025 permitting fees.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, Sol.
Item ten, aye, consideration and possible action to approve the Harlingen Main Street contract for 2025 Downtown District.
Alright.
Okay, so I have before you in your packet the 2025 contract, so this does need to get approved, the city commission meeting, because in May, it will not be valid. So the 2025 contract is with the Texas Main Street Program to locally designate Harlingen as the Texas Main Street. Since nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine, we've been a Texas Main Street Program. We've been a very successful Texas Main Street Program, but as a part of the contract, you will need to authorize the Main Street Director to attend professional development. We also take advantage of design workshops that we recently had this last year. We also have a listserv, email listserv with all of the other Texas Main Street managers as well. We have to do annual reporting, quarterly reporting, to show what we're doing to improve the Main Street District. If we fail to do any of that reporting, we do go under probation, and it could lead to termination. This membership is a $2,600 annual membership. And it's usually signed by the city manager. Within the last six years that I've been here, the city manager has always authorized this contract. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Alexis, I know we're in the middle of doing or gonna be wrapping up this mayor June or July, the historic downtown, or the downtown master plan. At that point, I'd love for you to come and do a presentation to the commission, and then give us your plan of action for the year, okay?
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Item ten J, consideration and possible action to approve the Texas Downtown Association membership renewal for 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Item ten K, consideration and possible action to approve the National Main Street Center membership for 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possibly action to include appointment and/or removal of any decisions subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
Commission? None.
Yes. He has none. Last meeting, I handed out, or was handed out some material. So if you guys did read and studied that a little bit, this is slam dunk confirmation. So I renominate Don Ray Leonard for the Harlingen Utilities Board.
Is there a second? Having no second, motion dies.
Thank you.
None.
Item twelve, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Following items are twelve A, deliberation pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to consider personnel matters, i.e. the regular annual evaluation of the city manager. Item twelve B, consideration with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding an agreed order between the City of Harlingen and TSTC pertaining to real property, city attorney. Item twelve C, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, parentheses, two, to receive attorney-client consultation protected by the attorney-client communications privilege, city attorney.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. The time is now 7:46 PM, and we'll retire to executive session and be out shortly. Time is now 8:06 PM, and we are back from executive session and back in open session. Melinda?
Item thirteen, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item thirteen A, discussion and possible action on item twelve B as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Item thirteen B, consideration and possible action on item twelve B as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to acknowledge the report. To acknowledge the report.
No, that's, that's, no. We need action on B.
I think A is the only one we need to action on.
No, there's one more.
B is, B is action.
Make a motion to acknowledge the report and proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Item thirteen C, consideration and possible action on item twelve C as discussed in executive session.
And this one doesn't need any action. Alright. And we are adjourned. Thank you.